Reports from school committee members? Do any school committee members have anything they wish to report? Okay, all right. Seeing none, I would like to then turn it over to the superintendent for superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The chair this evening and members of the committee, good evening to you and to the folks in public. And we welcome back the opportunity to provide a live meeting in person since last March, really fifteen plus months here. The first item on my agenda item is to discuss the last or most recent updates from Jeff Riley and the Department of Elementary Secondary Ed. Jeff Riley is the Commissioner of Education in Massachusetts. And he has sent out a directive to school superintendents and district leaders indicating the guidance moving forward from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed. As you know, we have sort of lived by this guidance this year. We made a policy as a school department and we know that's policy EBCFA. And that is a policy that govern masks. The policy subcommittee worked on that and determined that we wanted to include pre-K, K, and one in that policy, the recommendation from the state, the regional guidance at grade two and above. And we did include the lower grades in that as a local decision. The latest report from the Department of Elementary, the latest guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, and I want to read it verbatim if you don't mind. It says that it has come to our attention due to media reports this weekend that there is some misunderstanding regarding the DEES COVID-19 guidance released on May 27th. This email clarifies the DEES guidance for the remainder of the school year, summer, and fall, as shared on our call with school and district leaders this past Wednesday. And that's a reference to a phone call that the commissioner makes to local superintendents.
Is that all set?
Yeah.
If anyone can hear this? Are we good shot? Okay, you're good.
Sorry about that. So basically, the guidance says that this, for the remainder of the school year, masking indoors and maintaining other health and safety guidance as issued by DEES is required, underlined. Our school year is technically over. For summer programs, masking indoors and maintaining other health and safety guidance is not required but is encouraged. The DEES summer guidance is in alignment with state guidance encouraging unvaccinated individuals to continue to mask. The Department of Public Health Mask Advisory advises unvaccinated residents to continue wearing masks in indoor settings and when they can't socially distance. But again, masking indoors and maintaining other health and safety guidance is not required but is encouraged. And finally, for the fall, the commissioner states at this time, all health and safety guidance, including masking and physical distancing, will be lifted. We will collaborate with the Department of Public Health, DPH, to issue any additional health and safety recommendations over the summer, should they become necessary. And there's a contact at DEES to clarify any questions that folks have, district leaders or anyone else. So that's the latest guidance. Our school committee policy, as you know, EBCFA, indicates that the school committee, the current policy we have will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee. So the task before you tonight is perhaps a discussion and also the possible rescinding of that policy and moving on with the guidance that has been directed to us from the State Department of Elementary Ed. And I would turn that back over to you, Mr. Chair, for any discussion you may want to have.
Very much. So just a couple of notes about the discussion we're going to have. The first thing is for public comment, we're excited to have folks here and we really want to hear from you guys. The one thing I would ask is that if we do have a few folks here and if we just try to keep it, you know, to main point so we can make sure we get that everyone, that's our goal, we want to hear from everyone. And we are also going to be trying to mix in comments online that we might get because people asked us to keep doing this now and so we want to, we want to keep doing this so that it's convenient. If it's okay, before we start, I wanted to run something by you guys that is something that I thought and I don't want to hold it from you, but I wanted to just ask you what your thoughts are on this. So about timing, I'm a new, a very new interim chair and I want to do whatever I possibly can to maintain trust and transparency. And so I wanted to ask the committee what you all think about the fact that this agenda item came up relatively recently. I called around to mass association of school committees and to a couple other local boards and chair, boards and committees, just asking for advice. And I just wanted to hear from all of you about the specific point that if you looked at this agenda on Tuesday, you might not know that we were discussing this, but if you looked at it yesterday, you might. And so I just wanted to find out from all of you if you're cool with us doing what we're doing right now. There's nothing illegal about it and it is no one's fault, to be clear. I just want to know if you think we should get public comment tonight and vote on it? Or if you think we should get public comment tonight and schedule the earliest possible follow-up meeting to have the vote? Because people got essentially one day to see that mask guidance was going to be discussed tonight. So I just wanted to find out what the will of the committee is. And I believe that the earliest we could do that would be post on Friday, have a meeting on Tuesday, if the committee wanted to do that. Is that correct? Okay. So I just wanted to throw this out to all of you for discussion before we start public comment. Yes?
Well, I think we've been discussing this mask issue under the COVID updates. So I'm perfectly fine taking a vote tonight. But I'm also, I'm okay with, are we meeting in two weeks? Is that the plan?
No, so we won't be meeting again until July 22nd. Because we're back in summer.
I mean, I guess I would like to have a chance for people to, you know, if they're not here tonight and they want to make comments, I think we should allow that. So I'm in favor of doing, I don't know, like a small meeting just to do that, maybe next week. But I'm, I think because of the summer program that's starting, right Mr. Lynch?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, you know, since the state, I mean, I've always felt all along that we should follow state guidelines. And since the guidelines have changed, I'm comfortable taking a vote tonight. But I'm also want, don't want to disenfranchise people that thought they could speak about it. So I would be in favor of scheduling a meeting next week for just that comment.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman of the evening. Parents will always have the opportunity to continue to mask if they so desire.
Yep.
And that's always an option for them and an option for faculty, an option for anyone. What this, what this vote would do was go with state guidance that recommends for summer programs but does not require, and then list it for the fall. But in both of those cases, if there are parents and folks at home and families that have issues with not masking or with masking, then they can certainly do either of those things moving forward, just to clarify.
And I just wanted to be clear too, my, my reason for bringing this up actually has nothing to do with my feelings on what we're going to discuss. It has everything to do with are we doing the best we possibly can to make sure as many people have access to this as possible? And because of the crazy weekend announcement and the stuff that was beyond any of our control, when it was, when this agenda was initially posted, it did not have this on it. And that's the only reason, just to be clear.
However, also, we have discussed in the last couple of months that this would be our first in-person meeting and we did say that last time. So I think people have known for the last two weeks that we would be in person and if they wanted to be here tonight, then they had that opportunity to be here. I can't imagine that people that haven't commented online or, you know, knew, known that we would be here wouldn't have been here tonight if they didn't feel that. So I would be in favor of just voting tonight, moving forward.
Okay. I just want to echo what Teresa said, I'm completely in agreement. We've, I think we've discussed it at length, especially in the last meeting. I think we want to make sure that we're all set for summer because the programs are going to be started soon. I think that if we haven't heard something from somebody, then I think that kind of okay with whatever it is that we decide. So I would.
Okay. Yeah, and if it's okay, I just wanted to give you the idea of where this is coming from. So I was a little worried about the agenda stuff and the timing. And so I just looked up the open meeting law, stuff from the Attorney General, and there's a paragraph in there that says, "The Attorney General strongly encourages public bodies to postpone discussion and action on topics that are controversial or may be of particular interest to the public if the topic was not listed in the meeting notice." And that's all I'm saying. Does, I, I think I agree with all of you that we, we got guidance and, and we should act on it. But, so this is just a transparency, public participation issue for me. So if there's no further discussion, yep.
Through you, Mr. Lynch?
Sure.
So if somebody signed up for a summer program with the understanding that everybody would be masked inside and they no longer want their child to be in that program, could they get their refund?
Right, well, we don't, we're not really, other than the sports, the, the college bootcamp and the sports program this summer, and the, the, those two programs, yes, we would, we would reimburse. All of the other programs we're running this summer are free of charge, which include breakfast and lunch. So, so they're free of charge and they include nourishment for these kids. So those folks can, can always back out of those if they'd like, certainly. But those filled up, well, your initial ones filled up, you know, all right, the summer program, there's 200-plus students in it filled up and there's a waiting list.
Okay, all right. So if there's, if there's, sure.
No, just not making a motion.
Okay.
Just not making a motion that we rescind the mask order, whatever that number was.
EBCF, yeah. Okay, so we have motion by Greg, second by Teresa, all in favor? Oh, sorry, sorry. Right.
Well, we should do discussion like those.
I, I'd like to, if we can settle the issue of if we should vote on it tonight or not. Just, we heard from all of you, can we just get a vote on that from the committee? Are we, are we going to vote to rescind or are we going to look to push to the next available spot?
I think there's a motion and a second to rescind the policy and it'd be discussion now. And then, and then, if there's a vote, and if the vote's voted down.
Then we move to the next step?
Right.
Okay. All right. So I think what I'd like to do is first, I'd like to get discussion on rescinding the policy from the committee and then I'd like to open it up to all of you to come down. And just when you do come down, please just come down, make sure you're talking into the mic. And if I remember right, the last time we had an open meeting, I think you just say your name and your address.
Correct.
So I think that's it. So, Teresa, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Given the governor's latest in the last couple of days, I've been obviously keeping up on it, he has been vocal about being clear and happy that he sees a great number of vaccinations throughout the state and that he's already met a number that he's very comfortable with, given that many people who are around those who are vaccinated are safer. And I think we can all be honest that children are not at risk or certainly not as high of a risk. I think it's time that we take these masks off our children and require those who want it or give them the option, sure, I have zero issue with that, but do not require it. It should be optional.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Greg?
Yeah, I just want, because I have two children in the school system and, you know, when the vaccines first became available for school-aged children, you know, we had to really find a location to get their vaccines. But now I think I've seen signs almost in every supermarket, pharmacy, you can get the vaccine if you want. And I think it's a personal choice. So I'm comfortable that people who want the vaccine have gotten it. We have, what, zero cases in Millboro the last few days, I think, so?
In the town.
Yeah, so I think, you know, it's, yeah, I, I agree with Teresa, but yeah, I think it's time.
Excellent. Anyone else? Yeah, Maggie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's just a personal choice, I think we have to discuss that, that if you're comfortable in sending your kid to school without a mask, then that's your choice. If you're not, it's also your choice to have your kid have a mask on. And you're seeing people without masks everywhere you go now. So why is school going to be different? So I think we need to rescind the policy.
Sure. Anything else? See? No? If, if I can just offer a little bit, I want to call on you guys in just a second. I'll just offer my opinion. I guess the problem I have with it is that kids under 12 still can't receive it and where kids under 12 could be in our summer programs. I think that my, my current feelings are the same as they were two weeks ago. However, I am, I think, watching the vaccination rate just like the rest of you are and I feel very comfortable with fall. And so my main concern is summer programs. And so currently, yeah, I, I don't love the idea because here, here's the dynamic. You say, if you don't want to send your kid with a mask, you don't have to. You can keep your kid home. But in essence, that's exclusion. And so that's my feelings on it. And if anyone else has anything they want to say up here, if not, we'll turn it over to the public for public comment. Sound good? All right, so yeah, if anyone wants to speak, please come down. If there's multiple, just make a line and again, just say your name and your address as clearly into the microphone as you can.
Hi, you guys all right? Kristen Mora.
Hi.
We're on Miller Street. Thanks for having me, I'm glad I'm having a public meeting.
Thank you.
Wish I could see your faces. I just want to say that there are zero cases in Millboro that also includes the under 12. They don't have it either. Again, it's, it's exclusion, you say, but it's also the same if, I don't want my kid to wear a mask, they're excluded. They either have to wear it or they have to stay home. They don't get that choice. I don't think masks are healthy, I think they harbor bacteria, I think they cause mental, some mental issues as kids are struggling right now for mental health help and they're not getting it. They're just getting a mask. And I think it's disgusting and forcing them to continue to do this or not allowing parents the choice is shameful. I think you need to remove this policy and make it an option. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
And this is my very brave daughter. And she's going to say something.
Thank you.
I don't know what to say, but I get kicked out a lot at school by the teachers and I feel like it's very unfair and I shouldn't have to choose between my rights for an education and my health. And that, that's horrible that teachers make multiple kids feel this way. And she might hear it as well.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hi.
Sorry, just want to go. I'm Liam Machado, this is Eric Machado, we're on Pleasant Street. We're just going to echo Kristen, basically. I mean, I just feel like the vaccine rate is a moot point, it should always be an option, it should always be the parent's choice. I mean, this is the school. Nobody in the school has the authority, nobody at DESI has the authority to decide what's best for our kids, except for us, period. I get that you guys need to follow, sorry, I'm like short. I get you guys have to follow guidance, but it's guidance. You know, and, and I know you're all on the school committee because you want to do what's best for the kids in the school and the community, I get it. But ultimately, you have to listen to the parents. Well, I'm not saying that I want everybody in school not wearing a mask. If there's parents that want to send their kids in a mask, go ahead. I don't want my kids in a mask for many reasons. And there's, there's numerous studies and research and documentation out there against the use of masks. I mean, you can look at a box of those blue masks and it'll tell you it doesn't block virus transmission. COVID-19 is a virus. So how is that effective? Instead, you're causing a bunch of other potential issues for these kids that we might not know about for years to come. And I don't think any of you guys want that on your back. So, you know, I'm sorry, I feel like there's more behind this whole COVID thing, it has nothing to do with what we're talking about today. But moving forward regardless of what comes out in the fall, because I have a feeling this guidance is going to change once again come September, we need to remember it needs to be a parental choice, period. That's it.
Thank you very much for speaking. Does anyone else wish to come up under public comment for this? Yeah, come on up. And if you could just say your name and your address.
Sure.
Thank you.
It's Brian Madden and my son resides in Colorado Drive in Millboro. And I was listening on the way in, so I'm up to date, glad I can make it in time and work. You know, I'm somebody that extensively has spent the last 18 months, I think like the rest of you, trying to figure out what the heck hit us in our, in our community, you know? From an emotional standpoint, we say masks work, masks don't work, you know, what does it do for the psyche of the kids? I mean, we could go on and on, right? I know Bridgewater Rainham has already made, you know, their decision and, you know, I know the kids are going back. I believe that to be the case without masks on. I know that follow the science has become more of a religion, you know, than anything else. I know on my phone right now, there's 100 doctors and we can put videos up there and they could all tell you how masks don't work and the virus is too small and they go through and six feet, two feet, 10 feet, doesn't matter, you know? I, I don't think that's the point. I, I think that if, if DESI has given the recommendation, which, you know, I want to jump up and share for that, you know, so excited for our kids. And I think that's really what it comes down to, is it's not about our personal feelings, right, at this point in time. And, and I do, I do have understanding that there are people who aren't armed with any more information than they were three months ago and they're still in the same headspace and they are very fearful of COVID, you know? I get that, I have empathy for that. And that's when I say, well, what's great is they still do have the option to wear their mask. You know, that's how I look at it. I look at it like, you know, for, for my son, for my option, I don't have to, you know? But for, and there, I got off the phone with a teacher that I spoke to at the end of the year and said, you know, it looks like they might not have masks on, I said, and I, and I am in a relationship with a teacher and I, I get that world, you know? And I understand from a teacher's perspective that they're walking into a, to a building where a lot of these kids are not going to be vaccinated and that's, that's the place that they spend five days a week, you know? And I understand that that's scary. But they do have that option to wear a mask and they do have an option to still say, you know, socially distance. And I think when you weigh out what, wearing a mask and keeping the children away from each other as they have, yeah, we'll say they've been resilient, but I think you could also talk, I think all of us have stories of those children at home and, and, you know, what's going on over this last year now. So I think armed with that information and, you know, I'll leave it with that, I think it's inverted now where we do have to say, let's open it up, let's take off the masks and then those that still feel a certain way do have the option to keep their masks on. And I think we can, the both exist in that same, you know, that same universe. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything they want to say on this topic? Yeah?
We did have two.
Oh, okay.
Comments yet. So one from Dottie Davis Karen, and she said, "I feel wearing a mask as well as being vaccinated should be the choice of the parents." And then we have one from Eleanor Osborne who said, "Last about the Delta variant, where younger people are apparently more in danger for that variant."
I guess I would say in response to particularly that last one, and I would defer to you, Mr. Lynch, is that we do have the option as a committee at any time to come back together and discuss this again. Is that, so I guess I would say that we, we can be responsive to stuff that happens in the future. I, I guess that, that's pretty much all I'd say about that, that last one.
And Mr. Chair, through you.
Yes.
The Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed do have in that directive, "We will collaborate with Department of Public Health to issue any additional health and safety recommendations over the summer, should they become necessary."
Sure. And, and Mr. Lynch, I believe we, we have two meetings in the summer, July and August, but that does not stop us from scheduling an emergency meeting to deal with.
If you recall, last summer, we had one pretty much every week.
Yeah.
Every week.
Yeah.
Sorry, we have one more.
Okay.
From Jessica McInage, she asked, "What about an option where children are showing signs of illness have to wear masks or similar directive?" In case someone is on summer program.
That would be handled through the Health Department, they would go to the waiting room and then be excused from school at that point, just like we did all year, if their children were symptomatic.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else anyone wants to say or should we move to a, to a vote? Yeah? So I believe the motion by Greg, second by Teresa on the table is to rescind mask policy EBCF, EBCFA. So we don't have to do roll call votes anymore because we're not on Zoom, so I guess I'll just say all in favor of rescinding that policy. I say aye and all nay. So it passes. All right? So the policy is rescinded? I, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming. We have, as a school committee, I think, enjoyed a lot of interaction over the past 15 months and it's been incredible. So I just hope that we can continue to engage with all of you, both online and in person. I believe that we probably will be at the high school in the, in future meetings, but anyway, just thank you everyone for coming, we appreciate it. So if there's nothing else there, I'll turn it back over to Brian for some additional superintendent's reports.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to move on here, just wanted to mention the fact that the end of the year went very well. We had the final day for schoolchildren, was the sixth, the June 18th, and the teachers came back after the calendar noted Juneteenth on Monday. We did celebrate that holiday with regard to the school system on that date. We've had calls about that, the reason being is that we wanted to have the students complete their year on the Friday so that we could have, maintain some, some attendance integrity. And the teachers came back on the following Tuesday. There were a number of teachers that did put in, that had previous plans and in, in all cases, really, they were, they were basically excused for that half-day. We did agree that we would allow them to come for that half-day, but it was well-attended. There were great meetings, there were waffle trucks and lunch trucks provided by principals and PTOs and it was, it was really a nice atmosphere. And the school, the school council, the student council at the high school provided tours of the high school to all, any faculty member that wanted to go up there throughout the district, because there was a good deal of interest from faculty in other schools that wanted to see the new flagship school. And that was, that was attended also. So I just wanted to mention that in terms of the end of the school year. With regard to school choice update, as you know, the window was opened and then closed last Friday, June 18th at 5:00. A lottery was held Monday morning. We have a number of students, as many as six right now, on the waiting list for elementary. We still have a couple of spots in kindergarten, we still have spots in grade six and seven, and we still have spots in nine through 12. We will reopen the window at the end of August for anyone else who might be interested and for any other spots that might be, become available. For example, if we accepted students under school choice and they then make the choice not to come to us, or they make the choice to go to their, their resident school system or a different school system, then that would open up even more spots. So with just an update on that, that the elementary right now has been filled, there's still a spot, a couple of spots in kindergarten and grade six and seven and grades nine through 12, that the window will be reopened in August and that will be revisited at that time. You know, I'll provide you an update at that time. Any questions on that?
Sure. That question on, you mentioned the August slot and I imagine that we don't set a date for that until we know that we need it.
I believe the date has been set.
Has it?
Yeah, it has been posted.
Okay, all right. And that'll be on the website considerably?
Yep. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep. No other, no other questions on that, I'll move on to the summer programs update. And I do want to update you on a number of things that are going on in the summer. A very active summer in the Millboro Public Schools. I want to tell you that our summer programs traditionally include our extended school year program. And we've had our programs in the past that have been credit recovery programs at the middle school and the high school. And we've had a program in the summer called Sharp, which was stopped because there was no interest in continuing running it. And so we, as a district, sort of took over with the assistance of the Department of Elementary and And so we as a district sort of took over with the assistance of the Department of Elementary and Secretary Ed and Sarah, Sarah, Ms. Hickey will, will speak to that also, the money involved. But there are a number of things going on and I want to outline those for folks at the school committee and home if you'd like. We have a performing arts reboot camp. And that is in light of the fact that a number of our musical programs in particular were affected deeply by COVID and the, our inability to have traditional choral practices and band practices because the social distancing affected those programs. So there'll be a performing arts reboot camp this summer, uh, which will run July 12th through 22nd, two week section. And then July 26th to 29th, and then again, August 2nd through 12th. And the question is, what is reboot camp? And as I said, this is from Mr. Pittsley, the performing arts are back. If you play an instrument or want to learn or are interested in theater, join us this summer as we get back to doing what we love so much, playing, singing and acting. The camp will feature focused and fun learning in music and theater, special workshops for students and parents and much more. The camp will be held in the brand new performing arts center in the new Middleboro High School. It's been a long 15 months since the COVID-19 pandemic disrupted nearly all aspects of our lives. Education was certainly very different this past school year and the performing, performing arts were especially impacted. As we move into summer and look ahead to next year, we are so excited that restrictions are easing and the performing arts are making a comeback. This summer, Middleboro Public Schools are offering performing arts reboot camp for students to engage in workshops, activities, programs and other learning opportunities in the performing art, in the performing arts, excuse me. We hope to bring students back into the musical and theatrical activities they love so much and help kickstart our program into next school year. So some of the programs are open to grades five through eight. Some are open to grades five through 12 and others are just open to grades nine through 12. But those are on the website and if interested, you can certainly kick into that and, and join that program. They are offered free of charge. And there's also meals being served for those students who are in those programs. So that is in addition to our summer splash program, which is K through five, of incoming one through five. And those students, that program is full, 200 plus students in that. It's the first year of that program. We have a couple of teachers who you met at the last meeting who are running that program. Mr. Dawson, Mr. Dawson and Ms. Christie Goldman, and they'll be running that program this summer. And that's, that's a great program at, at the Berklin. We also have a credit recovery program at the high school and a credit recovery program at the middle school, which will be all, both offered at free of charge for all those students who need to go back to school, who perhaps lost credit because of a class they may have missed too many times. And, or failed and they want to recover and get back on, on track for next year. That is a program that's offered to them, like again, food will be offered in those programs. We have a couple of additional programs that, that are in cooperation with the folks at the library. We have our Tales and Tales program, which is a summer reading program for elementary and a summer reading program for our middle school students. And that is in cooperation and that's on the website also. And we also have a couple of programs that are pay as you go. One is the college boot camp, uh, which is for design for the class of 2022 students and their families. That is August 9th through 13th and August 16th through 20th. And that, like I said, is a pay as you go program. And then there's the Middleboro Public School Summer Athletic Clinic, which runs from June 28th through August 19th, which features such things as strength and conditioning, uh, boys' basketball, endurance track, girls' basketball, youth basketball, youth in track and field, boys lacrosse, field hockey, swimming and diving, coed, volleyball, soccer, youth soccer and majorettes. And so all of those programs will be offered on a pay as you go system. I had a discussion with one of our principals, Mr. Brandigan, the other day, a parent had called and said, boy, I like all of them. But when you add it up, when you have a family of two or three kids, uh, we've traditionally had caps on our athletic fees. And is there a possibility of doing that? So we're going to look into that and we'll talk about, to Mrs. Hickey about that, that just came up today, about looking at somebody who wants to be involved in all those programs and, and can we cap it off with a family cap? And I think that's reasonable moving forward, especially for those pay as you go programs and some of these other programs are, are free of charge. But I think definitely that's something we can look at. So lots going on in the Middleboro Public Schools this summer. A lot of it free of charge, the summer splash program is free of charge. The summer credit recovery programs are free of charge. The summer arts camp is free of charge for grades five through 12. And great opportunities for children and, and students in our district to take advantage of, of some great learning opportunities in the summer. So lots being done by a lot of folks. Sean Kenny is running the credit recovery program at the high school. Justin Pittsley is running the performing arts program at the high school. Like I said, Scott Dawson, Kristy Goldman, all supervised by principals, overseen by principals, Dr. Gates and myself and Ms. Hickey. So I know Ms. Hickey is particularly excited about the music reboot program. She's a, she's a music parent and is very involved in her own community with her students and her children. My students, my young people, my daughters have all been involved in the music program and hopefully my sixth grader, soon to be seventh grader will, will take advantage of this, this summer, a, a number of these things. So, and exciting news about who's paying for all this? Ms. Hickey.
Thank you, Superintendent Lynch. I'm, I'm really excited as a former educator about all of the things that are being offered this summer for students in Middleboro. And I'm excited that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has given me an opportunity to seek funding. So I, several weeks ago, I applied for a, a summer school in expansion and enrichment grant. This grant came in $81,500. I received approval of that grant today. Specifically, the purpose of this grant was to fund programs like were designed by the Middleboro Public Schools. They were specifically looking for, uh, programs that offered enrichment, recreational activities, mental health and social emotional wellness pieces and culturally responsive portions. And all of the programs that we are offering have built that in and I'm really excited about that. The department, well, the federal government has also set aside money that is being filtered through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education under the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, which we call ESSER, E-S-S-E-R. And I am in the process of writing the grant for that, which will cover the other half. So the second, the summer school expansion and engagement grant is a matching grant. So between the two grants, we will fund the programs this summer completely.
Excellent. Does anyone have any questions yet? Teresa?
I'm honestly blown away and incredibly impressed working in another district, but also just hearing from others throughout the state. I, I happen to be a part of a lot of groups, you know, just trying to continue to stay up on, on everything. Phenomenal job because this, we just came off a year where myself included educators are absolutely exhausted. And to be able to offer these programs is just really, really spectacular. So well done, Ms. Hickey and Mr. Lynch. And thank you to all the educators throughout this district who are stepping up and continuing to work this summer to get our kids right back to where they need to be and to have some fun through all of it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Vice Chair, I, I do, this is something that is grassroots, that these folks, principals got together with their folks and said, listen, what can we do just to add to students' lives this summer, uh, to make a real difference? And I think this, all these programs are designed around that. With the social emotional piece tied into everything that we're doing, we really hope to expand summer splash for next year. I think once it catches on and once folks look and, and even our faculty or, or folks in the community who want to put a program together and want to offer that as part of this, uh, we can certainly look at that down the road. This year, we sort of had a sort of a limited focus in terms of what we were able to do. We're not sure, as you know, whether we get off the ground. The music reboot program, not 100% sure that will all run because it'll be based on numbers, but I think a minimum number has just gone down by the fact that we have an ESSER grant and a state grant, matching grant that are paying for this. So, you know, if there's a music lesson for two saxophone players that may not have run when we had to pay a teacher so much money for a whole summer's worth, then we can run it now because that's, that's the beauty of it. Because this is, like I said, paid for with grant money from the feds and from the state. So thanks to the work that Ms. Hickey has done.
If parents didn't sign their kids up for any of these programs because they were afraid their kids were going to have to wear a mask, can they now enroll them in any of these programs?
Well, the, the splash program is, is filled. But the music reboot, reboot program registration is just starting or maybe it have not have started. I have to find out from, from Mr. Pittsley and find out where we're at with that. So, and the sports programs are open and will continue to be open. So a lot of those have numbers that are, that have maxed out at 20 and 21 and 22, but I don't know how many of them are filled.
All high school registrations open online.
So the high school registrations for summer camp and, and the reboot and everything else is open online as of today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Excellent. Any further questions about anything on the superintendent's report? All right. So we'll, we'll move on to in-person school committee meetings. And so we, we mentioned it a little bit earlier, but there typically in the summers, we go to once, once a month. Obviously, like Mr. Lynch mentioned, that was not the case last summer. As we were trying to keep up with all the additional guidance that was coming out. We do have two meetings scheduled right now for July 22nd and August 26th. And conceivably those meetings will be at the high school at 7:00 PM like normal. And because of the overwhelming support we got for the online option, we'll continue to do that and accept feedback that way. Thanks to Sean and, and in this particular reading bag for keeping an eye on it. So that's, that's the deal with the upcoming meetings for the school committee over the summer. So the next item, uh, sorry, does anyone have any questions on that before we move on? Sorry, yeah, July 22nd and August 26th. All right, any further questions on that? Sure. Yeah, can we do that? I wonder if Sean wouldn't mind throwing that in chat if he has the ability. Thank you, Sean. Okay.
I wasn't, I wasn't paying attention, July what?
July 22nd and August 26th, please. 7:00, 7:00 PM, Middleboro High School. Thank you. So no, no further comments on that. We're, we're going to skip school committee, subcommittees at this point. Mr. Young would like to provide an update on these. And I forgot, he, he said it was okay if I said this, um, he's out for a medical issue, um, he's, he's okay. But we're, this is the reason why we've shuffled this a little bit for today. So that will be brought up at the next meeting, possibly an email before. So next, if it's okay, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lynch for a, a high school building project update.
Chair members of the committee and members of the audience. We do have a, we have meeting, a monthly, a weekly meeting, 11 to 1 every Thursday. Just received a bunch of updates today. Right now, we're working on what's called punch lists, which are a list of things that are, that are, I'm not going to say it's, it's a mile long, but I'm going to say it's, it's in the hundreds of things that need to be addressed by each of the trades as part of the building, including the outside folks that do the groundwork, including the inside folks, the library, the, the auditorium, all those things. And that needs to be done. We also have a list, now that the teachers have been in and folks have asked in the past, why are you bringing, why'd you bring everybody in in April? When it wouldn't have been easier to bring them in September? Part of the reason to bring them in in April is, is to kick in these warrants, warranties and guarantees and find out how things are working. So if there are things that weren't working, if there was a different pieces of equipment that weren't working. If a teacher went in and said, listen, I really need an additional bookshelf here, uh, things like that. That's why we had that $4 million contingency budget, uh, so we can look at those and the building committee can then evaluate those requests and make a, make a decision on whether those things are essential, whether they're needed or whether they're just wanted. So, and that we asked Mr. Brandigan to go through that with each faculty member and say, is this something that would just be nice to have? Or is this something that really you need to have to operate as a teacher in the building at high school? So a lot of things to do, building committee coming up. Second Wednesday of each month, we'll continue, we continue through the summer. Today was the, boy, I think it's the 108th, 109th of meeting of the OAC, which is the Owners Architects and Construction Company. And they're well attended and it's, it's pointed and it's directed and there's some serious discussions. There was discussions about the roof at one point because the solar arrays that were put on, they weren't put on with the right padding underneath. And they all had to be replaced, but those are the things you discover when you put all the trades together and the designers and then our project manager and things get done. So it's been, those meetings have been well worth the time. Mr. Siciliano sits on the most, Mr. Hutchinson, uh, Mr. Brandigan, myself. And then our OPM, uh, and then Fontaine Brothers is involved and DRA always has two or three architects online. And we go through an agenda that's set and we, we painstakingly go through it. Sometimes it's painstaking, I must say, but sometimes it's enjoyable. But that's our latest update from the MHS.
Excellent. And, and before I put out your comment, I guess I just got to keep asking the, the same thing every time, just for emphasis, we're still under budget, I'm assuming.
Still under budget, uh, you know, off schedule. We used to be able to say on schedule, under budget, but we're not because we're now looking, but we're still looking at an October 5th completion date of the entire project. We were off schedule with getting students in there technically. But we were, COVID didn't help, obviously. That's was the main issue really with supplies, uh, construction equipment and such. But October 4th, October 5th is the completion date and they're still aiming for that. We were told today in the construction meeting that the, the former high school, which is now under destruction, is supposedly supposed to be leveled completely by June 30th. With just sorting of rubble to follow after that. So, and if you've been by there, they separate the mortar and the brick from the wires and cables and the pipes. Most of the pipes were removed from the building, most of the wiring was removed from the building before it was started to be taken down. So they're not dealing with that a lot. There's a fire watch that, that's there every day. They hired the Middleboro Fire Department, a truck and at least two firefighters every single day to be on a fire watch. And that will continue until the building is completely removed. And then a JV softball field will be built approximately where the, the gym parking lot is now. And the rest of it will be parking lot for the front of the school.
Excellent. Anyone, any questions for Brian on that? All right. So hearing none on that, uh, I'll just move on to the MASC, MASs Convention, November 3rd through 6th. You can sign up for this if you like. And if you do want to do that, you would contact?
Contact Anne Gagnon in my office. Most of you have her address, if you'd like to go one, two or three days, you're welcome to go. I usually drive down with a chair for at least one or two of the days. So you're certainly welcome to carpool with us or if you're on your own schedule, that's fine too.
Sure. And that's on November 3rd through 6th and it's in Hyannis. So once the tourists leave, I guess. So we already did our action item, which was number eight. So number nine, uh, as is kind of normal at the end of the school year, we have retirements and resignations. And if it's okay with the committee, I just wanted to read the names of, or actually, you know what? Mr. Lynch, if you wouldn't mind, I know you know all these folks and you might have just a tiny tidbit, um, instead of just me reading their names. Would you be willing to go down the resignations?
I certainly know.
Or retirements, rather.
I can't, I don't know all of them personally, but I did know all of them and what they did for the system and where they worked. Pam Bartlett was the head cook at Mary Kay Good Elementary School, a good long career there. Frank Catino, math teacher, Middleboro High School, a second career for him. He started off as a manager, Walmart, but decided he wanted to go back into teaching and believes in the military and had built his career, as you know, he was the president of the Middleboro Education Association. Worked closely with him, I worked closely with him in 12 contracts that we worked together and negotiated together. Sharon Doolan, longtime grade one teacher, Mary Kay Good in Reading. Mary Beth Eeny, a local, live in town here, a grade four teacher extraordinary, uh, retiring at the end of a long career. Denise Emon, secretary at Henry Berklin School, she came from the Whitman Hansen District and joined us at the middle school and finished her career at the Berklin. Mindy Fuller, Melinda Fuller, um, she is a local person, uh, you know, pretty much everybody knows Mindy. Moral Early Childhood Center, she was a, a number of years at the Nichols Middle School also. Heather Lawson, kindergarten teacher, worked her career here. Lynn Newell, an art teacher at Mary Kay Good Elementary Schools, retiring after full career. Jean Skelly, also Mary Kay Good Elementary School, she taught special education. Dealt with more of our involved students and, and was here every day, five days a week this past year, in front of those students, uh, in PPE, but working every day. Mary Tessier, a grade two teacher at Berklin School. Mary's been around for a long time and has worked her entire career, uh, raised her family in town. Catherine Tucker, a sped teacher at the high school, again, uh, somebody that spent her whole career with us and sad to see her go. Peter Wilber, science and physics teacher at Middleboro High School. Peter was a high school classmate of mine, graduated together. He went on to work with the G and E as an engineer for a number of years. Again, changed careers in the middle and then went to teach science and physics at the high school, will miss him. Beth Ann Young is a music teacher at John T. Nichols Middle School. Had a chance to, to wish her well the other day when I was here, uh, the second to last day of school. And she's moving on to her retirement and, and happy to be a grandmother and be working with, with her students. So those are the 13 current resignations we have, I mean, retirements, excuse me. We do have a number of resignations. have, I mean, retirements, excuse me. Uh, we do have a number of resignations that are listed on the agenda for many different reasons. Um, uh, changing of careers, moving to different school systems, moving out of the state, et cetera. Uh, but those retirements are the ones we want to recognize tonight, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, and let people know that, uh, some people, if we combine the years here, I would say we're probably talking at least a couple of hundred years or more, uh, of teaching experience that we are losing. It's tough to lose most, but it's also an opportunity for people that are finishing up college and maybe changing careers themselves to get into the profession and, and, and breathing life into a school district. So, uh, we look forward, we thank folks for their contributions and their many years of service, but we also look forward to the future, um, and, uh, and possibilities. So.
Excellent. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Superintendent.
I had a chance to sub a few years ago before I went full time in, in another district and I had a very many opportunities to sub in the special ed room with Ms. Skelly and she, she will be missed greatly. She was a phenomenal educator. Um, and I just wanted to personally wish her well and thank her for her years in Middleboro.
Excellent. Yeah, go.
I'll throw a comment here. It says, Jean Skelly with a little heart. Um, amazing teacher as all the list. Enjoy retirement to all. So, thank you, everybody.
Excellent. Yep. Any other, any other comments on that? We, we certainly thank them for all their years of service and, uh, thank you, Mr. Lynch, for giving us all the tidbits on them. Um, so, uh, there are, the next item on the agenda is donations and, um, I believe maybe you'd like to talk about that.
So we got, um, two donations from the special ed Olympics. Um, so for a total of $1,000, 500 for basketball, 500 for track, for, um, the, our commitment to inclusion, specifically during COVID and during the really challenging time. Um, and per that, um, donation, we are focusing on youth leadership. So it just kind of is a testament to all the kids and the great work that's being done up at the high school.
Excellent. All right. So that, that hits the end of our agenda. So, uh, I guess the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. So I heard a motion by Meg, second by Teresa. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.